Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Thursday, October 3rd, City Council Meeting for the Community of the Year. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abu Wasli?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First this evening, we have three proclamations. The first one is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I will come down front, and we have Alexis with Waypoint. Are you here? Come on forward. Thank you. Whereas, one in three women and one in four men will experience some form of domestic violence during their lifetime, and whereas intimate partner violence impacts victims, children, family, friends, and the community at large, and whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but is experienced in all economic, racial, ethnic, educational, societal, and religious groups, and is sustained by societal indifference, and whereas perpetrators of domestic violence should be held accountable for their actions and victims should have access to support and services to help them overcome their experience, and whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide support to victims of intimate partner violence and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem, and whereas a coordinated effort from all community members is needed to put a stop to this heinous crime. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Wasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage residents to support all community organizations working to address domestic violence, especially the work of Waypoint Services and their Geneline campaign on October 24th, 2024, and urge everyone to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, City of Marion. On behalf of Waypoint and all the victims that we serve here in Lynn County, we just want to say thank you for the work that you do in partnering with Waypoint to end domestic violence. We could not do the work that we do without the support of the community. We do a lot, but it really does take a community effort and all of the support. So thank you very much.
The next proclamation is A Week Without Driving. I've asked Councilmember Jensen to read that one, and we have Liz with the MPO here to accept it. Welcome, Liz.
Whereas, access to mobility is a fundamental part of health and community connection, allowing Marion residents to reach education and employment opportunities, medical services, shopping, recreation, and visit friends and family. And whereas, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics estimates the average cost of owning a car is approximately seventy-two cents for each mile driven, and many people cannot afford this cost. Whereas, nearly one-third of the people residing in the U.S. do not have a driver's license, either because of their age or a condition that does not allow them to drive. And whereas, transportation by motor vehicles represents the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the United States, and in order to meet our state's greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, we must reduce emissions in our transportation sector. And whereas, going one week without driving a personal vehicle is a great way to understand how we can improve our current transportation system to better meet the needs of Marion residents of all abilities and socioeconomic levels and improve and enhance transportation options such as public mass transit, biking, and walking pathways. Now therefore, I Steve Jensen, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Wasli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 30th through October 5th, 2024, as a week without driving, and I encourage all people in our city to join me in this special observance by exploiting the potential for reducing the reliance on personal motor vehicles and utilizing alternative options for transportation. Want to say something?
Council and Mayor, the Quarter Metropolitan Planning Organization commends the City of Marion for acknowledging National Week Without Driving. The Week Without Driving was created so that those who have the option to drive can learn firsthand about the barriers and challenges faced by those who cannot or choose not to drive. I encourage everyone to make a non-driving trip this week to Cedar Rapids Transit, which serves the City of Marion, as free rides through Sunday, Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And our final proclamation is for Fire Prevention Week. I've asked Councilmember Sernat to read that one. It looks like Chief Fagan is going to be accepting it?
Whereas, the City of Marion, Iowa is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those in, living, and visiting our community. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, house fires caused the deaths of 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 fire, excuse me, home fires. And whereas, roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, residents should make sure that their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities. And whereas, residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Marion's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of house fires and house fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You", serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Therefore, I Randy Sternad, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Wasli, Mayor of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Marion, and I urge all residents to make sure that their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Marion Fire and Emergency Services.
Yes, just a reminder to our community out there, look at your homes, talk about your exit plan, check your smoke alarms, and make them work for you. I know that is the theme for this year, but it really is important to make sure that they work, know what they sound like, talk to your families, and have a meeting place. So just a reminder, since it's that time of year, let's be safe and make this next year even safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our first public forum. This public forum is a time that is set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. All other comments can be made at the second public forum, which is towards the end of the meeting. Before we ask people to come forward, I would like to reiterate the guidelines for the public forum. Yellow comment cards can be found at the table near the door. Please complete those forms and turn them into the city clerk when you come forward to speak. If you have anything, any materials to hand out to the city council, please give those to the city clerk as well. You're encouraged to state your name and your group affiliation, if any. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. Please, if you, please keep in mind that if other comments, if other people have commented before you on the same topic, please try not to repeat the same points made. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is eminently threatening, which incites violence or is obscene. Please do not disparage other people, but keep your comments to the point that you are making. Speakers and attendees of the meeting should not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct which interferes with other people's ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in removal from the meeting. Thank you. Appreciate everyone's adherence to these guidelines, and we will ask for anyone who's here to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Please come forward at this time. Welcome, sir.
Hi, my name's Scott Colander. I live at 3210 Sunburst Avenue. And thank you, Mayor and council members. I was bringing up the yardie, the $6 a month, and I was wondering why, I mean, I pay taxes. Couldn't we buy the container versus pay the $6 rather than, you know, having to pay the $6 a month even when you're not using it? And I wanted to find out, is there a monthly fee to have the recycling bin and the garbage? Does anybody know the new containers that we haven't used yet?
Do you want to hang out after the meeting? I can touch base with them.
Okay, would you have a few minutes after the meeting to have the staff go over that with you and explain it?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it possible that you could buy the yardie container outright? I'm bringing that up.
Okay.
Versus, you know, the cost.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, the staff can go over all that information with you after the meeting? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Okay. Anyone else to address council on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing? Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through D4, Resolutions 32091 through 32099.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Items A1 through D4, Resolutions 32091 through 32099. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows. Items A1 through D4, Resolutions 32100 through 32104.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Wasli's abstention as presented. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Wasli's abstention. This is items A1 through D4, Resolutions 32100 to 32104. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Carries with one abstention. With that, Mayor, it's back to you. Oh, then it's back to me. All right. So, Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-14, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including Section 126-98 relating to Housing Code and Chapter 181 relating to Human Rights and Fair Housing. It's initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 24-14. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-11, amending Chapter 268 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding solid waste. Final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 24-11, amending Chapter 268 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding solid waste. Final consideration. Discussion?
Your Honor, if I may, I just wanted to give a quick update. So at this time, this is our first truck. It's actually, that's in our new facility. The guys are up there practicing with it. We'll have another truck that's here Monday. We'll have two that arrive on Wednesday next week. Our yard waste truck will not be here until the 15th, which is one day after we start, but we do have a loaner truck, and we'll use that loaner truck for the yard waste for that first day. And then the supplier that's supplying the trucks is actually going to be here on the 14th on our first go-live date. We have delivered 100% of the original carts that were asked for. Currently, there's approximately 500 change requests, so whether they want to switch to a bigger one or a smaller one, or they want to add yard waste or take yard waste away. And then we've gotten a total of about 3,000 that have opted into the yard waste. So originally, it was only 2,821 that opted into the yard waste. Now we're looking, we're about 3,000. So we've had a few more that have decided that they want to opt into the yard waste. So just wanted to give you a quick update, so we're good to go on our live date of the 14th.
Okay, thanks for the update. Any discussion on this item?
I noticed.
Oh, go ahead.
I noticed Mike looked right at me on the go-live date, certainly.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number 24-11, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-12, approving a request to rezone property from B.C. Community Business to P.U.D. Planned Unit Development for property located at 1195 East Post Road, Marion, Iowa. This will be the Platinum Development for final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 24-12, approving the request to rezon the property in Community Business to Plan Unit Development for 1195 East Post Road. Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number 24-12, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 32105, approving a preliminary site development plan for the development of multifamily units for property located at 1195 East Post Road, Marion, Iowa. And this is brought by Platinum Development LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32105, approving the preliminary site development plan to permit multifamily units to be located at 1195 East Post Road. Discussion? Go ahead, sir.
Dave, did we get those updates this week, or like any information on the security stuff?
No, I tried to follow up with Mr. Maurer, and I hadn't heard back, so I don't have an answer for you tonight.
Okay, understand.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 32105, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 32106, approving a final site development plan for the development of multifamily units for property located at 1195 East Post Road, Marion, Iowa. And this is for Platinum Development LLC. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32106, approving the final site development plan for multifamily units at 1195 East Post Road. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number 32106, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 24-15, approving an extension of ordinance number 23-26 related to commercial development moratorium for uses along portions of Tower Terrace Road, Highway 13, and the Central Corridor zoning districts. And this is our initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 24-15, approving an extension of ordinance number 23-26 related to commercial development moratorium for specific uses along portions of Tower Terrace Road, Highway 13, and Central Corridor zoning districts. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Dave, I just want to thank you and Nicole, and also Ryan and Kim for spending extra time with me on that topic or this particular item. It filled in some gaps for me, thinking about this as an integrated system all the way from our, you know, how this all fits together. So I just think, thank you for that. I'm still waiting to find out where I send the tuition check.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number 24-15, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public forum, which is a time for comments from members of the public on any topic. If anyone is here to address council, please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm Anna Klimer, 2475 McGowan Boulevard in Marion. I've been a Marion resident for over 20 years. I'm one of the four founding members of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity, an engaged parent of Lynn Mar students. Mar exists to elevate the voices and experiences of people of color in our community while also working to create a culture that is welcoming and inclusive for all people, including our LGBTQ+ parents, students, and neighbors. First, I want to acknowledge and express my appreciation for the City of Marion's swift response on social media to the unacceptable actions during last week's homecoming parade. It was heartening to see the city's schools and local advocates' response, as well as Marion's commitment to investigating the incident and ensuring safety and accountability. These are crucial steps in affirming our community's values of inclusion and respect. However, this moment calls for even more transparency and education to truly strengthen the safety and inclusion of all residents and visitors. I appreciated the September 27th Little Village article specifically that highlighted how that this is not new to our community. In fact, legislative action has been hurling fear-mongering harm at our district's students, staff, school board, neighbors on a state and national platform for years now. I know because I have sat in a packed auditorium next to the Spectrum Youth in 2022 with people young and old waiting their turn on the mic to either support or attack our LGBTQ kids and our district's equity efforts. And the attack and support has continued since. If you tracked comments during Band Book Week with our Marion Public Library, you feel the hate radiating in the comments like embers ready to ignite through anger, through strangers, to a neighbor, to a child, a staff, and even a book, a stark reminder of the work yet we have ahead of us. Additionally, I would also like to compliment the Cedar Rapids Civil Rights Commission's recognition that October is LGBTQ History Month, which is vital in highlighting how gay rights are intertwined with the broader civil rights movement. I hope that Marion can take further action this month by not only holding those accountable who would do harm to others, but also by promoting knowledge sharing through publications, not just social media. These efforts should reach the broader community, deepen understanding, and promote inclusivity. Unfortunately, we know too well that many of our neighbors do not feel welcomed or seen. Two families I know have left Marion because they did not experience the love, appreciation for diversity that we all hope to represent. We must ask ourselves what we can do differently so that every person, regardless of their identity, feels safe, secure, and valued here. Acts of hate and discrimination like this, targeting LGBTQ students, parents, and couples, don't reflect who we are or aspire to be, but they remind us that we must stay vigilant and proactive. Additionally, I encourage the city to take more deliberate steps in sharing information with the community. This includes advocating for minoritized groups and helping residents understand how to be effective allies. It is crucial that we amplify minoritized businesses, voices, and neighbors. Educate people on how to report incidences. The protection in place for LGBTQ and BIPOC and other minority residents is crucial and the rights we all must uphold. Mar has met with Medco and Chamber and the Civil Rights Commission to support continued innovation and collaboration to highlight and celebrate diversity in our community on Main Street and in each side street that we call home and in the ways that we work to reach higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council? Okay, with that, we'll go to council comments. We'll start with...
Your Honor, we had one comment submitted in advance of the meeting.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
From Amy Bishop. This was a follow-up to her comments she made at the September 5th meeting. She just requested detailed information regarding the project be submitted in writing and available for public review and comments.
Okay. Anything else?
No other comments.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Jensen?
Just going to invite everybody to come uptown tomorrow night for the Chocolate Walk, 6 to 9, so come up and have a good time. It'll be a beautiful evening. Nothing, Your Honor.
I would second the Chocolate Walk. But today, Councilmember Sarah Menser and our Comms Director Amber and I had the chance to meet with a group of journalists from Guinea. We had a really interesting conversation, talking about combating misinformation and the challenges and hurdles in doing that in today's digital world. Obviously, as a former journalist, I found that conversation very interesting. So thank you, Mayor Nick, for the invite to that meeting, because it was just really cool to hear their perspectives on the topic. And though there are some differences and limitations that they have with their version of a free press versus ours, a lot of things are really similar when it comes to the rise of other media outlets versus traditional outlets and the struggles that come with that. And also, a little bit on the dangers of AI too in that space. So it was just really interesting to hear those perspectives, and it was a great opportunity to have those folks come to Marion all the way from over there and to meet in our library. So it was just a really cool opportunity.
I just have one thing. I...
I just have one thing. I want to remind everybody that our Marion Fire Department is going to be celebrating its one hundred and fifty years. On Saturday, October twelfth, from nine to eleven with a program at nine forty-five. So. If you have the opportunity to come out, we hope for good weather. I had the privilege of serving on our. Fire department as a paid-on-call volunteer for ten years, so I'm very proud of our department. As well as all of our departments, but I'm looking forward to that celebration as well. So. If you can come out, I'm sure it'll be a great turnout. It's that station one, isn't it, chief? Yeah, thank you.
That's why I asked you to read the Fire Prevention Week. I always give all the, anything related to fire department to you because if you're interested in that. So. That is a milestone to be proud of and I hope that the entire community comes out for it and celebrates, especially. With our award-winning. Fire station. That has been recognized across the world. And I know, are we going to be unveiling something with that, with the ceremony?
Yes, there's quite a bit planned. I would really encourage our community to come. We are going to be doing a push-in of our replacement fire engine, so that'll be something the community will be able to participate in. And yes, we are unveiling a memorial plaque for Fire Station One, recognizing its. Its award. So. Lots of great programming in store, so really encourage the community. If you're available on Saturday morning, please come out. We promise we'll be done before the Hawkeye game, so.
Great, thank you. For my part. I want to congratulate the team again on the ribbon cutting for the Public. Works Building. That was another. Big milestone for us on a project we'd been anticipating and working on for many, many years. And it's great to finally see it open and operational and. Serving our community. So thank you to everyone who had a hand in bringing that to fruition and congratulations to. The residents and everyone who gets to work in that building, so. We also had a couple, another ribbon cutting the other day for Prairie Hill Park, so thank you to the Parks Department and all the team that worked on that, on that. That's another one that we've talked about for a number of years, so it was great to. Cut the ribbon on that and see people using it and enjoying it. And I just want to note that I beat Gage in the race down the slides, so. Just note that for the record.
I've only heard that so many times this week.
And the other day I also attended a statewide mayor's association meeting, so that was very interesting. And last Friday, I represented the city at the Czech and Slovak Museum for the dedication of the new clock. And the presidents of the Czech Republic and. And Slovakia were in attendance, so it was a very nice event, so. Thank you for the opportunity to represent the city at that. I do want to comment on. The parade incident and I do, I do think we can work through our. Civil Rights Commission to do more education. And to, and more outreach. And then we can each. Ourselves, we can, each of us can also show support. I have already, I've reached out to. The school and I plan to meet with the students on Monday. And just to, I think it'll be very important for them to know that they're supported. And that the community is here to support them and they belong here and we want them to feel welcome and that they belong here. So, and then I have a little surprise for them planned too, so. I'm hoping that'll be a positive thing for them to know that from, at least from my position in the community. That they are supported and. And we understand. What they go through, so. With that, thank you very much for being with us tonight and we'll see you next time.